Just thought I'd like to call a meeting to order and pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Coach?
Here.
White?
Here.
Under your help?
Here.
Michael F.?
Here.
David O.
Here.
This time I'll call a public hearing to order on the 2021 sewer rates. Is anybody here that wishes to speak on the sewer rates? Ask away. Mike, you're looking fit.
Working hard at...
The half I could see of you, anyway. I don't know what you got going under the mask, but...
This isn't a mask, it's a feedbag. Not a sandwich.
Ah, that's how you...
That's so good.
I like how you look.
I like it, I like it.
God, don't give me any ideas, I got enough trouble. Just a comment on sewer rates before I close the public hearing. The rate for the sewer rates has been stabilized in Great Park by the increased usage from our industrial customers at the east side of Batavia Town in our agribusiness park. And their increased usage has essentially offset the reduction in uses from some of the residential commercial accounts due to COVID. At the same time, costs have increased to deliver the service and process that fluent, but we're able to maintain a stable rate just due to the increased usage and increased revenue from our industrial partners in the sewer districts in the town. And that's the reason, we're not reducing our contributions to necessary future reserve accounts. We're not reducing our maintenance, we're still providing exactly the same level of service and contribution for financial stability down the road. But because of the increased usage, we're able to maintain these rates. And that is our goal, is to provide stability for the community and its residents and tenants. If there is no other comment on sewer rents, then I will call the public hearing closed. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing on water rates. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the proposed water rates?
Will there be an increase in the water rate?
It'll be a decrease. We're reducing the water rate by 3.4%, going down to $6.20 a thousand. And we're also reducing the egg rate. So again, for the same reason is that there is a benefit to the existing residential and like commercial components of the town by the increased demand of the industrial and large commercial sector, who all pay exactly the same per thousand gallons that a resident uses. So there are no incentive, there are no deals, there are no benefit to industry. They pay the same, and that compels them to better utilize and manage that resource. But it also contributes more to the general water fund to assist us in maintaining the same level of service across the broad area that our water department serves, the five towns that they're working in, as well as our community of Batavia. And hopefully this strength continues and we can maintain this stability. So industrial and large commercial sectors use a lot more water and demand a lot less service.
You mentioned the two new facilities, but you didn't say anything about Awhaka. I noticed they have been expanding exponentially. Has their water and sewer consumption followed?
Well, they're in the city of Batavia, they're city customers, they're not competition.
They're in the city?
Awhaka is on Cedar Street in the city of Batavia. Some of their warehousing expansion is in the town, the line goes through, the city-town line goes through one of their new buildings. But their operations are all in the city, they use city water and city sewer.
Oh, that'll flatter me.
Been driving by that for 50 years, you didn't know that till right now.
No, I didn't.
Single towns.
They're city customers.
Yeah, towns too.
Towns sits in the city area of the town.
Have to go, the line goes right to...
Right to the clubhouse.
Yep, yeah.
I assume the towns...
We better move the line.
Yeah, good luck.
Any other comments or questions on water rates? If not, I'll close the public hearing on the water rates. This time I'll open the public hearing.
No, you can't yet.
Oh, I can't yet?
Seven-ten.
Oh, seven fifteen, I'm sorry.
Seven fifteen or seven ten.
It's seven ten, I've got...
Seven ten it is, but it's not seven ten yet.
Oh, it's not?
Seven oh nine.
Oh.
See, somebody with a smartphone just called me out there.
We're watching the clock.
Look like Patrick seven to me.
Sorry, I don't have...
Yes, you're in charge, ma'am.
Got a good joke then.
A good one? No. I got three in mind, but I can't say them.
I'll stick around later if I tell them.
Good to go. Okay.
This time, I will call the public hearing on the 2021 town budget. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to that budget? If so, please state your name and address.
Could I, sir, please?
You may, Mike.
Mike Schultz, lifelong town of Batavia resident. I have not so much any concern on this particular budget, except that how it may extend into the future. And thank you all for being here, by the way, to hear us out, I appreciate it. I'm sure my neighbors do, too. Based on comments that we've discussed in the September meeting, and perhaps newspaper releases, and the budget which we now have. The comment was made that made me do a little additional research, that even last year, we cut the highway superintendent's budget from seventy-five and change down to fifteen, or whatever the number is in important. And I thought, well, and the next statement was, that was true, that happened, but it was not necessarily complete. So I know the highway superintendent's a very competent, capable individual, a very learned man, I believe he carries a professional engineering certificate. So I'm thinking, well, you know, the man doesn't work for $15,000 a year. So that caused me to look at the budget a little closer, a little more thoroughly at all the cost centers. And I started to discover and find where the town employee salaries or their compensation, where that revenue stream comes from. And I noticed a tremendous amount of dollars come from the water districts. So I thought, well, that's good, I understand that. So my question then goes to, is this forever? What I mean is, I know the budgetary, the communication goes through the legislator to Monroe County or Erie County, whichever it is. I mean, the town of Batavia doesn't really call the shops on the contract, if I'm not mistaken.
On which contract?
Contract, yeah.
I mean...
On which contract?
Water contract.
Well, the water delivery, and where I'm going, Greg, is I understand where the revenue comes in to pay our folks. You know, you see the shiny new equipment, you see the guys out in the field doing the installation, different towns. You see the need for professional engineering services. You can't just go install things however you want. So my thoughts go to the future. At some point in time, doesn't the towns take over their own water district? Or Monroe County, or is that a permanent arrangement?
No.
For us?
I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't...
Thank you.
I'll address that. Genesee County provides water to the city of Batavia, the town of Batavia, and I believe the town of Oakfield, town and village of Oakfield, okay? Everyone else is served by a retail agreement with Monroe County Water Authority. So most of the other towns that have public water are operated by Monroe County Water Authority. My experience in the water sewer operations side has been that there was issue with any utility that was a monopoly. I've lived 67 years, and 50 of it have been somewhat dismayed by large monopolistic utility companies, gas, electric, telephone. You don't have any options, you're going to get what they give you. More to the point, water and sewer operations are the most crucial component to have control over to enhance economic development. Without economic development, we don't have an increased tax base, and our costs generally go up because we're stagnant. So we need a robust and well-financed and well-designed and well-operated water and sanitary sewer system. And my experience historically over the last 45 years is that smaller communities are often not on a priority list of large, multi-town, multi-county authorities who have no political oversight or management. And they can generally do what they would like to do, where they would like to do it. And so this town, traditionally, over my career, has always had the option to go to a retail agreement and have the Monroe County Water Authority operate the water system. And not have a water department. And if that's the case, then those staff members would be redundant. To answer your point, the town engineer position, which is a very high-paid position, is financed some by water, some by sewer, some by general fund. I mean, it's a collective of all of that. But that is a two-year appointment under town law, that has to be reappointed. There's a position in town law that every town in New York State has a town engineer position. It's supposed to be filled or can be filled on a two-year basis and then renewed. So there's no harm, no foul, if there is no longer a need for that person. So we've done our best to provide the same or better service and still have local control over our water and sanitary sewer operations destiny by doing strategic planning and getting funding opportunities and sizing lines appropriately to meet our future demand based on our plan, our comprehensive plan and our development plan. If we were to be a retail customer, we would take the size line that they feel comfortable allowing us to build. We would still have to finance and pay for it, but it may not be big enough to allow for expansion and growth. So to answer your question, we're not stuck with any model. And we're not dependent on any model. And the subsidy that we get from sharing virtually every employee in this organization through several different parts of the budget means they're all doing two or three different jobs to earn the wage that they're paid. But if that goes away, then that wage goes away, and that is reduced, not in the budget. We're historically pretty transparent. If we don't have the need, we had one time had, I think, seven people in the engineering department, now we have four. If there's no need for that, we just terminate the position in the budget. We don't have anybody here that couldn't be immediately employed someplace else, probably making a little more money. So if your question is, are we married to this model to maintain our tax rate on the general fund side? The answer to that is no. We're not. Because if there's no need for that level of service from that particular individual, then that engineering position would go to part-time, or even a further reduced part-time, or it would just be simply left out of the budget, not funded, and it would just end. So there's a real incentive for everybody that's in the town employee, particularly in the engineering and administration, to get a better return for their time. So we've tried to maintain a three-to-one return on investment on a 10-year rolling average, taking their wages and looking at what we get as grant and cash and improvements and an infrastructure. And we try to maintain that, you know, two-and-a-half to three-to-one return on investment for those wages. We look at it as a business, at least I do. And if there's not a return, then we need to look at what can we shave and where do we cut? Maybe let this position go. If we need to refill it, we're not reluctant at all to go out and hire some help to assist us in providing the service that we feel we need to provide. And sharing it across a number of other communities also buffers us and assists us in maintaining, you know, a balanced budget and reducing the effect of things like COVID. Now, our apprehension six weeks ago or seven weeks ago was solely because New York State refused to commit and let anybody in Genesee County or the town of Batavia know how much money we were going to get, not only from state aid, but in our sales taxes. Our plan has always been sound, we've worked on it for 10 years, we've tried it with the fire service. We're confident in our plan and with our investments that we've had and our increased assessed value in this town, we're up 43% over 10 years. That's a pretty broad tax base to, essentially, taxable income is up over 30%. Our goal was to sustain and set a rate that would be pretty much stable for far into the future as we could hope, and incentivize every staff member and every elected person in the town to commit to doing a better job, increasing the wealth and the total assessed value of the community, without reducing or imposing anything on our environmental footprint. Remaining environmentally focused is an enhancement. But we've stabilized our property taxes with a significant amount of grant money. Our whole community got LED lights two years ago, and we're saving twenty-some thousands, maybe $25,000 a year on electric bill, and that was all grant-funded. And we got cash to boot, paid some of our staff people for all that application. So three of those engineers were busy just administering that $150,000 grant to change us to LED. But the savings down the road for the next rest of our lives is in hundreds of thousands of dollars. So there is no obligation, and we're not going to see a hit on the tax rate, because as soon as the need for these positions reduces, we eliminate the positions. And we've been committed to that. And we have a plan for that, and we discuss that in our projections each and every year. And our engineers, and our staff, and our board, and our consultants, we all meet. I have a five-year plan, it shows 10 years, I could show it to you after the meeting. But we project these things, and we upgrade that five-year plan annually. And we look down the road, so that whatever we're looking at now, we're already looking five years down the road, minimally, to see what we're going to need to do now, so that that remains stable. And buffers us from having these spikes. So our tax rate increase, looking at the town of Batavia as a community, and having five or six different taxes imposed on people and houses. You have the town tax, which is probably the lowest, or close to the lowest, with the fire tax. So you have town of Batavia, town tax, you have a fire tax, then you have a county tax, then you have a school tax. There may be another tax depending on where you live, if it's, you know, a special district or something. Our taxes are about 10% of what the school taxes are. Our total tax levy in collections would be about $1.2 or $1.3 million for the year, just the general fund. And that's a, you know, a 16% or 14%, whatever the increase is. It amounts to 40 cents on a $1,000 assessed value. But we also had better information when we set that rate of what the county's revenues are going to be, because the state finally released the money to Genesee County for the sales taxes. And so the county was better able to manage their cash and come up with a projection that allowed them to reduce their tax rate. So I believe if everything goes right and we pass this budget, our tax rate goes up 40 cents, the county's goes down 31 cents. So there will be a nine cent per thousand dollar increase. So on a $100,000 house, it's nine bucks a year, on a $150,000 house, it's, I don't know, 13.50. 13.50, a little over a buck a month. And this has all taken six weeks to try to anticipate expenses at the county level and working very closely with the county officials, as well as spending a lot of time doing the math and the projections in-house with these engineers that we have and our financial clerks that we have, to come up with something as close to net neutral and still offset this significant shortfall that we apprehend may be coming in New York State. And we feel that we're well-funded for that. We still have our commitment for the future, which is to run the community for 400 days without any other aid, and still have money in the budget to offset any unanticipated spikes in expenditures with a fund balance allocation that won't touch our apocalypse money. So those things have all shifted since our last meeting. And we were looking at about a $300,000 deficit, which would have taken $300,000 out of unexpended fund balance to balance the books in the year 2020. And that's after taking a million dollars out of a $5 million budget. We've reduced those expenditures by $1 million. 20% cut across the board in 2020, we've not spent. But then we got encouraging news, and we received a check last week for over $1 million, and that's in the bank. So we're actually a net positive at the end of October. The books are closed, the girls worked all through the weekend, getting me a closed set of books. So I know that October 31st, we have about a $500,000 net positive year-over budget. We expect that to be depleted by the end of the year to around zero. But it's looking very much like we won't have to take any money out of unexpended fund balance this year in 2020 that we anticipated taking $900 and some thousand dollars of. We're not taking any, and that allows us to put that in our long-term investment and use the residual savings to offset next year's loss of revenue from Genesee County and New York State in combination with a tax increase. If that explains it.
It did.
Any, I mean, does that answer the question?
It did, it did.
We're not married to positions here, it's not a job program. People are here because they're essential, and as long as there's a need, they're here. And they're not happy if they're not being essential and not generating some benefit. They'd rather go someplace where they can do that, that's the personality culture of this organization. We foster that, and we work very hard to maintain that. Most of the people, like I said, are doing at least two job titles, and that allows some overlap and some buffering. But they all understand if there's not enough work, their wages get reduced to the amount of work that there is. And this board has been pretty committed to seeing salaries reduced significantly. And if there's not good value there, we only pay for what value we're getting. It's not our money, it's your money. And I think we're maybe somewhat unique in that. Anything else?
One more.
Go for it.
I am so happy that you people are here. I have to tell you that this really makes what we do easier, because it's generally been very difficult for the last 14 years to do all of this in a vacuum and not have any questions to ask. We're limited to our perspective on all of this, and I very much appreciate your questions. It really helps me and it helps the rest of the board.
Could we dwell on for a minute? When the initial budget was prepared before all the chaos hit, there was a half a million dollar capital project
for this building. Correct.
And you touched on it a little bit at the September 30 meeting. And most of the justification sounded like it was due to inefficiency in the court system with no jury box, deliberation room, and so on and so forth. No place to chain the prisoners up against the wall. No place to chain the prisoners up against the wall. So I presume that that thought, that concept has not gone away. It'll surface again. I was hoping we could talk to that a little bit. Certainly this year, and you just touched on it and I'll piggyback on top of that. The staff here proved themselves to be a self-managed working, if you will. I mean, they took care of business. And I don't know of anybody that ever complained about not being able to be treated fairly or properly or quickly by any of the staff at the town of Batavia. So that's very good. And I believe last year or last month, when we talked about the inefficiency of the court system, you also indicated that you didn't even have an office here. And I guess it doesn't matter. They don't need you. But we could probably find a ten, twelve-foot construction pillar and put it out back.
Actually, we've considered that.
We talked about it.
Levity aside, at some point in time, the towns and the villages need to, I believe, in Genesee County, better reckon with sharing. And mostly I'm thinking about the court system. The same taxpayers that are in this room, you all included, help pay for two county court systems, one old, abandoned, not used much, and a new one. Oakfield, four miles away, they just built the facility that replicates everything you described. And that's used by Elba and Alabama as well as Oakfield. So my thought goes to what you just mentioned, return on investment. In private industry, if I wanted to build a warehouse, it was Aldepat. It was hard to justify a return on investment. So is it possible or probable that should we expand this facility, other people will be able to use it? Or are we just building our own silo and sandbox?
Well, I'll answer that question. We're not building anything until we see the dust out. Right now, I believe, was it seven years ago or eight years ago that we started a consolidation effort with the town of Alabama, Oakfield, Elba, Batavia, and a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce on land that was in the city of Batavia and tax exempt forever, that was donated to the city by the VA, to build a joint court facility that would allow those four communities and any other that wanted to join and use one facility and reduce their overhead. Because in my opinion, and I've stated this in public many, many times, I think it's audacious for Genesee County to have thirty elected justices in a day where no community can afford the cost of maintaining a facility to the specification of the state of New York without unjustly depriving their community of better or maybe more better services. And if you have to give up plow and roads to enhance your courthouse to meet the state standard, that's not good sense for any of us. So we've been working on this for about ten years. I believe right now, virtually every town is looking to share a facility with their neighboring towns. And there are laws that allow that and some that prohibit skipping. But I suspect that Bethany will be going with Alexander. I think Pavilion may be going to Leroy. The communities outside may be able to do exactly what you're proposing. And I think in the end, based on what New York State has played, laid out there in the past year with bail reform and this laissez-faire attitude on prosecuting criminals, we're still going to be the busiest town court in Genesee County. But I don't know that we're going to see anywhere near the caseload that we once had. And I'm not sure that the state isn't going to look at this and see how ridiculous it is to administer as many as seventeen courts. We have thirteen town courts, five village courts, a city court, a county court. And a county of sixty thousand people, it seems absurd. So we're not proposing to spend any money on any facility upgrades till we get a clearer picture from Albany. We've actually enhanced the office of the courts to the degree that we can without spending anybody by reducing the population in the building, in the rest of the building. And I know that the court's offices are, I don't know, you could speak to that. They're pretty crowded, but it's a lot more room than some of the other staff in the town hall had. But now that we're migrating away from a brick and mortar operations center and moving to a more virtual town hall, I see no need and we have no money in the budget to expand a facility. We do have to make necessary mechanical repairs and enhancements to get better efficiency on our utilities and some upgrades. This hasn't been touched since it was constructed, but it's not just the court that's driving it. It's the entire facility being undersized for what we had going on and the design was not conducive to productive work. I don't have an office. My executive secretary and my bookkeeper are sharing a small office. We're already in conversation with the city of Batavia to perhaps move the assessor's office for the town of Batavia people to the city center because there's an office in the city center where our assessor is two days a week. Might as well be able to use that space. So we're working already on enhancements to utilize our existing footprint, economize the operation of it and not expand anything because of some state-mantated thing. And that was one of several blessings of COVID-19 hitting. Is that it, I think, has allowed people in Albany to truly see how idiotic it is to have this many layers upon layers upon layers. And it had given us the freedom through these executive orders to actually transact business the way business could be done and should be done, in my opinion. By eliminating a lot of the bureaucratic oversight and taking a year and a half to get a project from concept to construction instead of thirty days. It saves us tens of thousands of dollars, maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars this year. And I think the state will recognize that there needs to be a general overhaul of the justice system. But if we're going to look at that, we're also looking at, do we need eighteen or nineteen fire departments in a county of sixty thousand people? Do we need that much fire equipment? Do we need thirty-five or forty fire engines? And that's not to disparage what the volunteers do. My God, they work for free and we'd be lost without them. Our rates are ten percent of what the rates are in a city for fire protection. It's penny on a dollar, literally. We've got fifty square miles for, you know, a third of the price of what five square miles costs. And in a sense, we're at about, we have about a third of the fire equipment in Genesee County that Los Angeles County, California has. I think they have eighty-eight fire engines in Los Angeles. I'd have to look it up again. But a couple of years ago, I checked and I said, my God, you know, they only got three times as much equipment in Los Angeles. They're picking up five million people. So there's that to look at. And this is a difficult task because you have all these independently elected boards on fire districts and fire companies. And I mean, there's hundreds of people who have dedicated themselves and you just can't go in and say, we're not doing it like this. There has to be a concern number. Same thing with highway departments and highway superintendents. We have thirteen elected highway superintendents in Genesee County. We have five villages that have a superintendent. We have a county superintendent. We've got city superintendent. We've got superintendents superintending sixty or seventy staff members that always pretty much know what they're doing without having somebody following around the town to put the plow up and down. And these things have all been tried for thirty years. Back in the nineties, we looked at Genesee Two Thousand. How do we find efficiencies? How do we reduce the overhead? How do we get rid of the low-hanging fruit and pluck those and save that million or two million dollars in Genesee County? It all amounts to a few cents a thousand on your tax bill, but it adds up to millions. Our board has been focused on this for fourteen years. And we continue to focus on what can we do to address your concerns and your concerns and anyone else's concerns. And I don't have any answers, but we are certainly open to it and we are not going to be spending any money on expanded brick and mortar footprints. I would much rather see us focus our energy on becoming better virtually and doing the remote access and finding ways to enhance accessibility from those who are unable to come in and out and better serve the aging community because we're looking at the age of the community and being better able to serve them and reduce their costs and improve efficiency to the residential side. And at the same time, provide a balanced and attractive commercial and industrial site opportunity to fund it. But your thoughts are right on target and you are welcome here every week at five o'clock on Wednesdays to help us through this process and so are you. This is exactly the kind of response that will make our community better is this kind of perception and these kinds of suggestions. We're working on a vacuum most of the time. And we need this, we need this kind of, more than every two or three years. We have fifty meetings a year, all focused on solutions to these exact problems. And every one of us here is invested in this and committed to finding an easier path. And we're not popular, but it is part of the job. And having five heads collectively collaborating on a budget and doing this, dealing with human resource issues, dealing with all the different agencies and all the different departments for the same salary that we would pay a manager to do it, who would be immune to any comment from taxpayers, we think is a much better model. We could be wrong, but we're willing to listen to any of you at any time to assist us in this process. So to answer your question, this isn't a short-term hiatus from spending big money on a big expansion. And I don't think we see that in our future. We've already reached out when the county was proposing to build a new jail. To just get our courtroom out of this building and put it at the jail. It's at the jail. A better place to have a courtroom is attached to a jail. And that's not completely out of consideration. Nor is it out of consideration for our court to merge with one of the existing courts at the county or the city level. Anything is out there. We have an extremely busy court, probably the busiest one in the county with over a hundred cases usually a month, criminal cases that come through plus traffic. So it is much busier than most other courts, probably busier than three or four combined. So we do need a facility, but we're compelled to use what we have. And I'd be damned if I'm going to spend any of your money on a facility to keep Governor or anybody in Albany happy. Because they're not coughing up the money they said they would to pay for Blacktop. So to answer your question, we're not proposing this to anybody.
Thank you.
You're both welcome. Makes my job easy. One last thing I have to administer is a construction project. I'd rather spend it on roads.
I'm done.
Anyone else?
I'm new to this. Sorry. So a couple of questions.
Your name?
Michael Dana. Michael Dana.
Dana?
Address?
Address, eight three one one Bank Street Road. So we've all lived upon COVID now, lying on eleven months, right? Plus, nothing plus. So it's nothing new. And just kind of looking at the budget, I see that, you know, for the culture and our ages, there was like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars that was budgeted for that. And I heard where you said that and we got the sales tax money in, but we still fall short, right? Or was there a surplus to the amount of money that we got in from New York State to kind of cover the costs the budget's up to today?
We're covering the cost of what?
The operating costs for the budget, right?
Well, our budget is comprised, the revenue side of our budget is comprised of property taxes, revenue from Genesee County.
Right.
That is a distribution of what they collect for property taxes, sales tax. And then we have roughly a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that comes from miscellaneous revenue. Some from the courts, maybe, some from state aid for hosting the Batavia Dallas VLT money, Sunday money, some money for highway chips money, other various and sundry things that come in. And our concern was that New York State was going to short, and our concern still is that New York State will continue to short Genesee County the full amount of their reimbursement that Genesee County is expecting from New York State. If they persist in reducing their revenue to Genesee County, then Genesee County will not have any choice but to reduce the revenue they distribute to the towns. So this year, we have seen about, I'm guessing, it'll balance out somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars in revenue shortfall that we were expecting to get from Genesee County that we are not going to get. We've seen a reduction of twenty percent of chips and any of the other state reimbursements. So call it an even three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in revenues for 2020 that we did not get. But we cut spending by a million dollars. So we mixed, starting in March and April, we stopped everything that wasn't crucial and essential in the general fund. And focused on using our assets, our employees, our equipment and our allocated money in the budget that we had in cash to improve infrastructure and get as much paving and as much construction work done this year while prices were low. Asphalt was low. Virtually everything was at an all-time low. And we did our best to utilize all the resources to get as much work done this year. And we were still able to cut a million dollars in expenditures. So instead of having a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit funded by our fund balance, we're looking very close to being break even. Not having to take any money out of fund balance, not having to reduce any of the services, actually preparing for next year ahead of schedule and having the resources to fully fund and finance all the services for next year with a net between county reduction and county increase of nine cents per thousand dollars.
So with that nine cent, I mean, is there still the chance that you cut back nine essential items out of the budget? You know, what I was referring to is like the elk trail, the boat line. Those are all things that could be pushed off till next year. Would you agree?
I will agree. And I will say that those things, because they're budgeted, will not be spent until their revenue to cover it. We've done, we've been, every budget has been a deficit budget by design. But our staff has found ways to get additional revenues from grants and loans and project management and other things to offset that. So we've actually been netting a positive and banking that in the past. And because it's in a budget doesn't mean it gets spent. This is a zero-based budget community, which means every year, we start the budget with, what do you absolutely have to have? Now go find a way to fund it besides using tax dollars. And they've been very successful at that. And year-over- And year over, in 14 years, I think we've seen a pretty significant net improvement and still maintain a robust fund balance to offset any unforeseen consequence of New York State's actions.
And then one last question. With that 9%, that 9 cent levy that we're looking at, it could be more or less, probably more. Are they also looking to increase the values of the homes?
Well, the assessed value was not done in the town of Batavia. The valuation last year wasn't done. And in March, no one knew what was going to happen to property values. So the assessed value should have gone up for residential properties somewhere between 8 and 10%. And that didn't happen.
Eight to 10%.
So if it's 8 to 10% for 2020 that didn't happen, and it's again 8 to 9% for 2021, because the reality is residential properties are selling for almost 20% more this year than they did two years ago. And that's what drives the assessed value. The state comes in and they look at comparables, what are these houses selling at? The assessors have limited control over how to do that, but they do need to do a reassessment this year in order to qualify for state aid that we would get to offset the upward assessment. And in the consequence of your $100,000 house going to $120,000 in valuation, the county and the school taxes will have to reduce their rates because they're in a CAC. So their overall increase for school and county, unless they vote to override it, which is almost impossible to comprehend because of the financial consequences to counties and schools for overriding the tax cap. If your valuation increase is 20%, your school taxes and county taxes will reduce by, that's how the county was able to reduce the county tax because the assessed value increased so dramatically.
And some of the towns that raised?
And some of the towns that raised last year, I think Virgin and Stafford were two that did raise their property value. We didn't. It was a decision that I supported because I thought people had enough to deal with without getting a letter saying their house was now worth $10,000 or $20,000 or $30,000 more than it was last year and you don't know if you're going to have a job. So we felt that was probably not in anybody's best interest. And because we have a buffer, we have a good financial strategy and we do have the cash to navigate this for a year or two, we chose not to insist on a property tax increase. Our tax levy this year, our rate of increase takes into effect the 2022 tax collection. So your 2021 taxes, town taxes, won't be collected, I mean, on this new accurate. School taxes and county taxes will be on an increased assessment for 2021, but because they're in a tax cap, they will have to reduce the rate if you want to bank it.
Because they can't go up more than 2%.
So there's a cap on those two entities. If they must the cap, then the state can absolutely not give them any money. And then they would have to just finance all of the mandated stuff on their own. And I don't think anybody's willing to take that out. Our county has been extremely good at finding that balance and passing those savings back to the community without any smoke and mirrors. We did look at what we're going to get as revenue from this tax increase for 2022. And at that time, at this time next year, we're going to have a pretty good idea of what our total taxable assessment is and we'll be able to modify this tax rate then because we'll have a better, clearer picture in three months or four months from now than we have right now. But our crystal ball says that you won't be paying the new town tax until January of 2022, which will be the first time you would see any impact on the town tax side of it. That nine or 10 cents a thousand issue would take effect. We don't know what the county taxes will do next year, but we did look at that. And that is all part of what we've done for the last four months in this process is try to anticipate every possible thing that can happen and buffer it and still have assets to manage and run the town in the event it gets catastrophically worse and still not have to give up those essential services. So yes, assessments may increase, but at the same time, when assessments increased a few years ago, we did drop the tax rate in Batavia by 10%. I think that was three years ago. So we dropped it 20 cents a thousand. This time we're increasing it 40 cents. If we hadn't dropped it 20 cents, if we'd have just kept it stable, we would only have to increase it 15 cents because we would have collected money for two or three years that we didn't necessarily need. But our view historically has been, years before I was elected, going back 20 years, the town of Batavia, if they had excess revenue, would pay county taxes down a quarter of a million dollars a year. One year they paid a million dollars, but we did it here. Sent a quarter of a million dollars to Genesee County to reduce people's county taxes in this town. We did it for decades to reduce those taxes. And that's a great plan until you run out of money. When you don't have any money and you don't have any road budget and no one's taking care of any strategic needs and all of a sudden you've got 600 culverts that are 60 years old, they all need to be replaced, but nobody did anything. They were too busy cutting taxes and keeping taxes flat to spend any money. And we were in a real bad place, infrastructure way. We've recovered from that and we're consistently and persistently looking not to ever be in a deficit situation with infrastructure again because without it, we can't be attracted to commerce. So our plan does accommodate those increased valuations. We don't know what they'll be. A lot can happen between now and when that valuation comes up. But we're in a, in a place in Genesee County, particularly in Batavia, where housing is so short and prices have escalated so dramatically that every real estate agent and every assessor is just looking around wondering what is going on. Houses, I've been informed that houses are typically for sale less than 48 hours and going for 5% more than asking price. And asking price is generally more than what the assessed value is. Assessors have done a good job not inflating or conflating or adjusting anybody's tax base to get a better chunk of county revenue. It's pretty damn accurate and the state does a pretty good job holding people feet to the fire to make sure their math and their science works for that. And our assessment group does work in five different counties. And they see the consequence and they get to hear, they get to hear from constituents, not just from this town, but in the city of Batavia, Virgin, Arroyo, Pavilion, Alexander, I mean, they get it all. I think they're well tuned and do it 60% of the county. I think you'll see a pretty accurate rebound, but your concerns about what's it going to do to the power tax rate are, it's a good question. I think you'll see us buffer our future cash needs and balance that because we did look as many years down the road as we can. And the number that we came up with took that, that exact number into effect.
Brilliant. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question. Where is this boat launch being built and why do we need it?
We had money in the budget initially to finish out a dedicated piece of ground that was provided in Batavia at no cost on East Pembroke. It's a kayak launch. It's essentially a flat spot about eight feet wide with a dump truck over crusher run two, spread on it, written in a sign.
Yeah, but where?
On the Tonalana Creek at East Pembroke, the old gas station up there next to the fire hall, just above the dam in East Pembroke.
Oh, okay.
We had a grant fund the last one. We put the money in the budget, but we got grant funded to build the Tawanas Park. I believe there's one in the city of Batavia, Kibby Park. And when there's grant money available and we can, we can do something to develop, I think. We were provided, how much money from the town of Batavia Republican Committee?
$8,000.
How much?
$8,000.
The town of Batavia Republican Committee gave $5,000 to the town of Batavia to enhance the development of a kayak launch in it. So we're not taking money out of the taxpayers' pocket to do something. We budget for it, but we always try to find some other resource. And we've had extraordinary benefit from the Boy Scouts of America and Eagle Scout Projects, all of our parks, as well as United Way Day of Caring, as well as almost $100,000 of private donation to enhance playground equipment for handicapped people in our parks. We paid pennies on a dollar to provide recreational facilities here compared to most other communities. And it is mostly done through the efforts of this board and their subordinates in the staff going out and leveraging things to enhance the community's recreational opportunities with very minimal cost to the town's taxpayers.
So if we're not going to spend the $40,000 on the boat launch, why do we have it in the budget?
It's a placeholder.
The what?
A placeholder. And I have to look and see where it is in the budget. To be honest with you, I have to...
It sounds odd to me.
It's not 40,000.
It can't be 40,000 for the boat.
I don't think it's 40,000, but let me find that.
No, I think 10,000, 10,000 for the boat launch and then it was 60,000 for the Ellicott Trail.
Yes.
Yes, that was, yeah.
And why do we need the Ellicott Trail?
What's that?
Why do we need the Ellicott Trail?
We don't need parks either, but it's something that we typically do. And the Ellicott Trail, we got a lot of grant money to do that.
But it's still going to cost us 60 grand.
That, that might...
The city and the town here.
We're getting money back this year. I'm not sure that doesn't wash up.
There's revenues that are out there yet to be collected for that. I don't know what it's going to cost to operate Ellicott Trail, but I don't think it's going to be, we won't know till next year. But our only section to maintain is a gravel path from Seventh Springs Road to the city line on East Main Street. That's it. That's all we have to maintain. It won't be 60,000.
But I think included in the budget is...
$5,000.
For what?
It says 5.
60 was the year before?
5, 60 is like, yeah, 60.
$60,000 this year. That was a capital expenditure that will be replaced with grant and other funds. Next year, the 2021 is only going to be 5,000. I mean, we've cut line item by line item by, like I said, 5.2 last year for this year's budget. 5.2 million dollars was proposed to be spent in 2020 and we're around 4 million. We're going to come in around 4, 4.1. So we've cut 20% across the board for the 2021 budget.
Yeah, New York State gave us over a million dollars for the Ellicott Trail.
And that project was planned, what, four, five years ago?
Four years ago.
COVID wasn't even a thought.
And I'll be honest, we wouldn't try it now. I will say this, given the opportunity to go through anything involving the New York State DOT and a project will never happen as long as I'm supervising. It was a biggest god-awful waste of time and money that we could have done a better job for half the money and delivered it in half the time. But it would have come 100% out of the pockets of the community. And the decision was made not knowing how congested and bureaucratic and how many literally thousands of pages of documents would have to be administered to get that 1.3 million or whatever it was that we got to build this thing out.
And all that being said, I've probably gotten more positive feedback from that trail than anything else I've seen done in this community.
Well, wasn't that supposed to go through the city?
It does, it does.
Yep, it's the city.
It's a joint project.
It's a joint project. The city and the county all maintain their sections of the Ellicott Trail.
Same time.
The city, county and town all have components of the Ellicott Trail.
And the portion that goes through the city already built or is all built?
It's all done. It's all done. Part of it does go along the street, but there are parts that don't.
Ah, okay.
To Whit, are we going around?
Goes along to Whit Park, it goes up Florence Avenue. There's a number of places through the cemetery, there's a bridge off of Evans Street that goes across Tonalana Creek and picks you over behind Genesee Lumber. I mean, there's a, there's a very nice map and I will say, we could spend $2 million reconstructing a road and get five people to comment on how nice that is to have a smooth road. We built a bicycle path and there have been literally hundreds, if not more, comments of how well received that is and how much they've enjoyed it.
People walk down every day.
Absolutely. There's no argument there. It was all misleading in the budget that, you know, it looked like it was 60,000 in the budget.
Well, that's last, that's...
There was part of that.
The one thing is what we had budgeted. And again, because it's budgeted, doesn't mean it gets spent. We have to put a number in.
But just because it's budgeted, as you say, you put it in the budget, but then all gets put into the levy that gets passed under the deck there, right?
The levy, the levy is for the stuff that's not included. I would say there's a half a million dollars coming out of fund balances. So the levy's there if there's no money coming out of fund balances to protect that. The levy is for the essential stuff.
We have in-kind service to...
If there are no other questions, then would someone move to adjourn? Someone move back in? Accept the adjournment at the meeting as a closing of the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Mike White?
Yes.
White?